All right, so it's at seven o'clock and we call meeting order. Thank you for coming. First thing on our agenda is approval of our lot line meeting minutes. Any corrections, changes? That will give to John. All right, all favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, first applicant is Wawa.
Would you prefer that we present from the table?
Well, you'll have a microphone there. Unless you have a lot of display you want to put on the table.
If you could put up the rendered site plan, please. Good evening, Julie Bunce-Sparkleton from the law firm of East Burn and Bray. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Prostow Pine Goods Health Heard LLC. Joining me this evening on behalf of the applicant is Joe Bada. Next to Joe Bada is the project civil engineer, that's Chris Zizinas from Baller Engineering. And then behind Joe Bada is Eric Ossumchuck. He is the project traffic engineer from Traffic Planning and Design. So this project proposes a lot line change for the two contiguous properties located at thirty-sixty and thirty-sixty-eight Old State Road. The reconfigured lot one is to be owned by the applicant and is located, as you can see on the site plan, Chris is pointing it out there, it's more at the corner of State Road and Meeting House Road. And that's to be developed with a Wawa convenience store with eight multi-product fuel dispensers and then associated site improvements. For reconfigured two is to be maintained by the current owner of the property that belongs. So they will continue to own that property and it will also maintain the existing improvements on the property which are a non-conforming, multi-residential dwelling and some associated residential structures with that. And Chris is pointing that out too, it's the not colored portion of that rendered site plan. So this project was commenced way back in April of last year, at which time we attended a staff meeting and we went through the proposed project with township staff. And shortly thereafter, we submitted a sketch plan, as you may recall. We were before the plan admission, I think it was just a year ago, in August of last year, with the sketch plan presentation, we listened to comments, we had a review letter from township engineer, incorporated changes into the plans as we went through sketch plan process with the board. In addition, the applicants met, I think, two or three occasions with the abutting property owners to the rear and some of the other property owners in the area, discussed the project with them, showed them the plan. The residents had a number of comments that were very well taken. We incorporated their suggested changes in, and this was all in an effort to reduce impacts as much as possible. So we increased the berm in the back on the rear property line there, as Chris is pointing out. We added additional landscaping, there's fencing there now. And then another request from the property owners was that we move the trash enclosure. We originally had it proposed for the back area there and then we moved it to the front of the property. Those were all required, that we did incorporate into our plan. Also during the sketch plan process, we submitted a written request to the board of supervisors requesting that the hours of operation be extended. For these uses, the convenience store and the motor vehicle fuel station, they're E89 used in your ordinance. The ordinance states that they are allowed to operate from six AM to eleven PM. So unless the board of supervisors extends the hours upon written request at the applicant. So we made that written request to the board of supervisors to they extend the hours of operation for the Wawa course to twenty-four hour operation. And after three meetings, we had three meetings with the supervisors, we were able to convince the supervisors with many conditions attached to extend the hours of operation to twenty-four hours. We run through these conditions and this was adopted, there was a resolution adopted by the board, twenty-three dash oh four, that approved the extended hours. And then there are a number of conditions and they're important because they mitigate any potential impacts from this project. So the first was that the lighting height maximum is sixteen feet. The next was that no merchandise or trash pickup, no merchandise deliveries or trash pickup between ten PM and six AM. No high-speed diesel fuel pumps are to be located at the property. There needs to be sufficient oversized parking spaces and those are oversized spaces for like landscaping vehicles and other oversized trucks. No music, video, or audio advertisements at the pump, maintenance of landscaping and buffering in perpetuity, and signage stating that cars are not to be left unattended when pumping gas. And finally, indoor/outdoor security cameras are to be provided at the property. So those were all agreed to by applicant, it's all been incorporated into the plans that are before you for review tonight. Thereafter, applicant submitted an application to zoning hearing board, needed a few variances that were requested from the zoning hearing board, all of the variances were granted. They included that the fuel station was allowed to be within a thousand feet of public and private water sources, a lack or an increase in the permit for area, allowed the convenience store to be located on a major collateral road. It also allowed indoor seating for the convenience store and to permit the trash closure in the night yard and some signage variances as well. So again, those were, those variances were granted by the zoning hearing board in May of this year. After, we committed land development plans, I believe it was June thirtieth, to the township that are before you for review recommendation this evening. We did receive township engineers review letters. We've been through them, space will comply, a couple discussions, and we have some waiver requests. So before I get to that, I just want to turn it over to the project engineer, Chris, and just to give a more detailed description of the improvements that are being proposed. Chris?
So as Julie said, the plan has been through the township and we have made some changes. She highlighted a few of them, I'll just go through a few letters. Based on our initial coordination with PennDOT, which we'll get further into, the site was actually shifted back so that there's more length in this driveway. And that allowed us to also move the trash enclosure here based on some of the setback requirements. So this layout starts to incorporate different traffic maneuvers to help just the overall circulation and allow for the oversized vehicles, not tractor trailers, to come onto the site. We are proposing seven oversized spaces. There is three in front here along State Road and four in the back of the site here. There's seventy-three diesel parking spaces, which includes the seven oversized spaces. We're also proposing this area in the back to be undeveloped and we are providing most of our afforestation, reforestation in that area. The store is six thousand forty-nine square feet. It is a front-back store, so there's an entrance here and an entrance here. As Julie said, there's eight multi-product dispensers in this area. There are air pumps located at the front store here. The underground tanks are next to the fuel pumps at this location. And what is not shown on this plan is that stormwater management is provided underground in this area here, closest to the intersection. That is the direction that the site mainly greets today. Most of the flow goes to an existing inlet that's here. There's also a culvert that goes under State Road in this corner of the property. We had an initial meeting with the Bucks County Conservation District just to talk about our general design approach, which we will be proposing in underground MRC East of Warner Basin, which generally complies with all of the township ordinance requirements and DEP requirements. There's some comments in the letters from township engineer, but as Julie said, they mainly will comply. The main comment in here to be discussed, I think, is just the oversized vehicle parking spaces and how many are being provided. We think that seven is adequate, it's more than what Wawa typically has. And again, it's to accommodate landscape, trailers, trucks, or larger things of that nature. Wawa does not have high-speed diesel dispensing, so tractor trailers coming to the site is not advantageous for anybody. Although the fuel delivery truck and the regular delivery truck can circulate the site, having tractor trailers intermingling with just regular car traffic on something this small is not what anybody wants. Wawa can control diesel deliveries, they can control their regular deliveries, they can't control tractor trailers that just come on site and potentially cause backups and conflicts with traffic maneuvers.
At this point, I think what I was envisioning was because there are significant and traffic improvements being proposed as well, I'd like to have our traffic engineer run through what seems proposed. Eric? Yeah, I didn't.
I have some. So we have prepared traffic studies. Traffic studies that have been submitted to the township and PennDOT based on the reviews that we received originally, that was submitted in February of 2023. Received reviews from the township at PennDOT and updated the study accordingly in June of 2023. This study has been moved by PennDOT, the June study, since we received our pretty much design details at this point, the view, the improvement package, and I'm going to go through that in a moment. We received the township engineer's letter, but there's reference to the McMahon Township traffic engineer's letter, which we haven't received yet. Again, PennDOT has reviewed the study and the plan and we're down to design detail at this point. So the plan I've outlined focuses on the intersection, Meeting House and State on the corner of the property. So it's an unsaturated intersection day. We incorporate the traffic from some of the other developments that you are reviewing currently for the township to make sure that when we develop the design package and the improvement package, that it can accommodate that traffic. So you'll see, coming from the south, traveling north towards the intersection, you would have additional lanes incorporated as you're approaching the traffic signal. So you have a left turn lane, a right turn lane, and a through lane there. Consequently, on the southbound approach, coming down from three oh nine, you would have a three-lane cross-section there. It's noted on the plan in front of you, but I don't know if it's noted up there, but that southbound right turn lane is proposed as part of another development to the west. So all of these improvements, you know, have been identified, incorporate the track from all the developments in the township. Just not specifically to Wawa, but this is the improved package that we have to coordinate with some of the other developments in the area. That was one of the review comments from PennDOT. So we'll be reviewing how to implement these improvements, who's going to participate and to what end. Other notes on the improvement package, I'll talk about the access points on Meeting House. We intend to have a full access, full movement access on that roadway and that will allow people to get out, to go to the signal, travel to the south. Based on our coordination with PennDOT and the township, traffic engineer, we've proposed a what I'll call a three-quarter driveway on State Road and that will not allow for left turns to be made out of that driveway. So you'll be able to have a right in, a right out, and a left in with a dedicated left turn lane at that location. You'll note, traveling north onto State Road, we have a right turn lane depicted there, but there's also an inset with a no-deceleration lane alternative. We're, that's something we have to coordinate with McMahon and with PennDOT as to what the tree is going to be there. What we want to do is try to provide and keep an adequate access to the puzzle while reduce impacts to the neighboring property owner there. Sanitary lines or something along there that we have to try to avoid. But we've coordinated that preliminarily with PennDOT and that's something we'll have to tackle as we proceed through our design phase there, as we get further into the design and we get more adequate survey information and we can lay out the design and tackle that. So that is essentially the breadth of the improvements. And we'll note that you'll see the three colors there depicted on the plan and that is simply depicting the ability for large trucks to make those maneuvers, which is simply the PennDOT requirement for signalized intersections is that those large trucks can make those maneuvers without impeding on opposing travelers. So happy to answer any questions at this point.
Does this require any off-site, need some acquisitions for these improvements?
Again, that hasn't been fully vetted and if it would need them, you have to obtain those. I don't know that we've identified particular areas of interest. Again, once we get some more detailed survey information, we'll know where the PennDOT legal driveway lands and we can vet that out.
Did you say that your oversized vehicle parking is not intended for tractor trailers?
I believe that's what Chris said.
So what does a tractor trailer driver do?
They typically don't enter this site.
So are you clear with the Wawa up near the contaminated turnpike entrance at six sixty-three?
Yeah, just on Friday.
June five, I agree. It's rare to go by there and not see a tractor trailer. And what they did there is, behind the building, they allocated a couple of spots for tractor trailers, for drivers to go in and grab a cup of coffee, grab their hoodies before they go on the turnpike. So with the proposal for many warehouses, many women have to take warehouses in the area and tractor trailer drivers associated with them, I think we probably have difficulty keeping the bathroom still and maybe better to consider how to accommodate them rather than discourage them.
I mean, it's something we can look at. I think what we were trying to accomplish here was to keep as much of above our area and open space as possible because certainly we have room to work with back there. But, you know, to keep the nice green area in the buffer and to shield the abutting property owners of the town, we wanted to keep that area green. And I know that it's Wawa preference, but they don't have tractor trailers in there and that really could be what you're speaking of, a function of the turnpike. You know, and the trucks coming in there and right before they're going to get on a turnpike and take a long distance drive. You know, at the local Wawa, I live in the Horsham area, there's five Wavas there in Horsham alone. And I have never seen a tractor trailer in anyone in the area.
Right, and you want to go to the other one where there's a tractor, other deliveries. I mean, it's probably has an extra amount of large vehicle traffic in this area.
I think our intentions were, you know, to develop, for the Wawa, we've developed them for the last fifteen years, sort of thirty-eight years for them. And we've never had a tractor trailer parked on any of our sites. I believe had multiple leaves with neighbors in the area and we're not trying to invite tractor trailers and any tractor trailers though. We're trying to keep it as oversized vehicles like landscape vehicles. That box is the most I've done for oversized vehicles also. So I think we're trying to keep this pretty friendly, site-friendly and not make it a truck stop.
And I understand that and I appreciate that and I agree with that. Like, I don't speak for the hungry truck drivers out there, but maybe looking for.
They kind of, I mean, this is what I've gotten a few times, is truck drivers know where they can pull in and not pull in and where they can make a convenient stop and not a convenient stop. And they kind of know that and they don't want to maneuver through here at night or in the daytime like with all the truck pulling all the park traffic. It's not conducive to what they have to do. They're not going to be able to park and leave their car being in the truck, they will, you know, find a spot. They're pretty smart about what they have to do. They might pull in once, but they're not going to pull in now.
Are you finished? Did you guys have any other questions for the traffic engineer? Thanks.
I think some of the comments in the review letter, one of them was about the architectural rendering, so we do have those, if you could flip, I think it's the next slide, so you can, it's a little bit of difficulty, I know. But that's what is proposed for the site, so.
I think this is similar to what we did at Buckman.
So this is pretty standard typical Wawa materials.
We should look back to Bill's.
It's actually, this is actually a prototype that they don't use all the time. It's one that we've used a few times. So it is, it's actually a really nice layout and nice story.
So one down Dublin. So one down, that's the front of the store at the top right and then this is the back of the store in the middle, the rear entrance.
The front is facing State Road, the rear is facing Old State Road.
Correct. And then we included the floor plan, as I had mentioned, we had a variance approved to allow for the seating within the store. So floor plan is also shown and then the next slide will show the fuel pump and the canopy.
And this is an A-frame canopy, it's a really nice canopy. It's not just plain a canopy, it's very similar to also what we found in Buckman, I think.
And the stone pillars, you can see, rise up. And then the trash enclosure is shown to the right and as you can see, it'll match the store materials and be fully enclosed.
That's the trash enclosure, is that what you said?
To the right, correct.
What's the canopy of the tollgate road?
The canopy at tollgate road?
Tollgate three oh nine?
I think this is the same prototype we're also using in the town of Bucks County.
Fair. So with that, again, the review letter comments, happy to address any of them, but it's all will comply?
Yeah, let's run through that quick. I think I have a couple of things.
Absolutely.
If it will comply, you'll have to read it, it's always a will comply on the number of numbers four. If you don't mind just starting at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. So the first one, first year discussion item, so the narrative was provided, the lot line plan will come out of this plan set and be a standalone plan, that's what will comply. The third comment, just discussed with some of the variances. The fourth is the resolution for the twenty-four operation, we comply with all those. The fifth one is the parking and specifically the seven oversized truck parking spaces and confirming that's adequate, so.
So before you move on, are you guys comfortable with the parking situation they created?
Is that part of the board supervisor's approval or conditions, the seven?
It wasn't seven, what he said it has to provide sufficient because they wanted another plate at that axle. We're going to be discussing those with them again further.
Submitting architectural plans, we did send them over to the township, but we also presented them here. We also have information on the underground storage tanks, which Wawa has the typical presentation that they do, that was also provided for the township after its initiation and can be reviewed. Eight, discussed the existing non-conformities on lot two and just changing the right way around since five.
Before you want to note about the setback you might have prepared one of the sentences there?
That's correct. So this lot existing, which is all on Meeting House from Old State and it is being typically chucked around here. So to keep it zoning compliant as possible, we added a square of land here to the left, so that is helping with some of the setbacks because previously it had some front yard stuff. Number nine is the waiver letter and we can run through all of those thoroughly. Ten is the traffic impact study, as stated, that will comply, we'll work through, and any plan changes that may happen. Number eleven, we had requested a waiver for this and we can discuss if this is needed for sidewalks and pedestrian connections based on the other warehouses. On this plan, we do not show any sidewalk being added along State or Meeting House for the area that we're improving for the Wawa or the area along Old State here. Along lot two, with the existing non-conformities, it would be very difficult or impossible in some areas to have a continuous sidewalk here and it doesn't really lead anywhere and the area of the lot here along Old State is between two residential uses. So in our opinion, it doesn't seem to make sense to have sidewalks along this area of the lot. However, if it were desired, we could provide sidewalks along State Road and Meeting House within the Wawa lot, that's being approved.
I know we had discussion about sidewalk coming, what would you call it, south on Meeting House to State Road from a warehouse, other side of State Road on Meeting House, the warehouse going up above there. We talked about continuing sidewalk all the way to State Road in anticipation that you guys are going to get approved to promote foot traffic from that warehouse or residences over there.
Just to piggyback on that, I mean, those, the sidewalk, I mean, that I had envisioned as potential wasn't necessarily the front end of the site because as you said, there's not necessary connection. We did have the issue that we talked about with the various warehouse, which is the, we want to go up to the north on that property, which has sidewalks now that extends over a couple hundred feet of the intersection. And then this other warehouse that is not here tonight, will be here next week, is on, it's at the corner from the house. So there's, you know, the thought of how can we connect that warehouse down to the wall? And I realized the difficulty with the proximity of the structure to the street. I didn't look into it in detail, but I think that's worth investigating, coordinating between your project and the other warehouse project. Maybe it's on the opposite side of the street, put a crosswalk down at the entrance. If that ultimately makes more sense. Probably if it came off of Old Street along that western property line. I'll come through the back, like you don't think there is a trail more than a problem? But that's possible, that might actually be more.
Problem with all of that is that these are all off-site improvements and the applicant doesn't own that property. I think improvements on other people's properties and technically, you know, off-site improvements are not committed under the state statutes, they're not acquired. under the base statutes, they're not acquired.